Okay, I'll call the meeting to order. I'm looking for the adoption of agenda. Counselor Byers?
I believe that's as amended.
Oh, yes, thank you. As amended. All those in favor? Those opposed? Carried. And adoption of the previous minutes of July 2014's meeting. Counselor Wilkinson, anyone see any errors or mistakes? Okay, those in favor? Those opposed? Carried. And then Steve, we should be ready here shortly. Then delegations and it's your worship. Jim Glinsky, Mayor of Yellowhead County should be zooming in.
That really just happened.
Yeah, a little bit of a blip.
Is this all the panel up and running?
There he is.
All right, Jim, we can see you. Just got unmute you.
Can you hear me? Testing, one, two, three. Okay, good.
Good. Okay, welcome to the meeting, sir, and carry on with your presentation.
Well, first of all, thank you, Acting Worship, and to all council and staff there for giving me the opportunity to join you during your Committee of the Whole. And listening to it outside here right now, I I think the information that I want to pass on to you is also being realized by the people up above there because we're getting a lot of thunder and lightning going on around here right now. But that said, I would like to have met with you guys in much better terms than what is taking place right now. But before I go on there, I just want to say one thing positive. I got a text message the other day from a guy from Calgary who passed through on the long weekend with his family of five. And they went to Wilmore Park and used your cycling track. And he complimented you guys so much on that. Actually, complimented us, thinking it was ours, but I corrected him and told him it was yours. But he really appreciated the service that you guys provided. It was a good compliment. But anyways, as you probably all were, on the 23rd, we were advised by the RMA, which is the Rural Municipal Association, about the new review being recommended by the province. And that the province was looking at possibility of force scenarios, and I believe we did send correspondence to you guys. Scenario A, B, C, and D with the province. And industry preferring scenario D. It wasn't very good news. We knew that this was coming, but we didn't know what was coming or how much it was going to affect because our RMA was told not to speak to anybody until it was officially released. As a result of that, the RMA did some quick scanning and we could be seeing a reduction in our tax base of 21%. And actually, that is based on 2019 figures. That's all they had in hand. Barb Lyons, our finance person, actually recalculated for 2020. And we're probably looking at 26% dealing with the worst case scenario for 2020. And that doesn't actually take into account the fact that we reduced our taxes, our meal费 by 5% for industry and residents. And we also decided to drop the billing tax altogether. So that was another half million dollars off there. So we could be seeing numbers hitting in the 13, 14 million dollar range. We do not know that at this time, we will not know until we hear from the government as to which one they are going to select. Now, since that came out, we have met with Shane Getson. And we have met with Martin Long. And with all the surrounding counties in a joint meeting held about 10 days ago. Now, in fairness to the MLAs, they both were not aware of this until just hours before it was released by the RMA. They were told by their senior people. So they were taken back by it as much as we are. The thing that's very alarming is that we are not hearing anything from the Minister of Municipal Affairs. Nothing is coming from his office. All the information that we are receiving is coming from our association, the RMA. And the RMA tells us that they have not been privileged to any information by the province or by industry as to the rationale of how they came about with scenario A, B, C, and D. We've also had the opportunity since then to talk to the Deputy Minister of Energy, who of course is supporting industry in a very strong way. But he couldn't give us any answers, or he wouldn't give us any answers. He just says, well, we have to do what's the best thing for industry. That's fine. What really bothers us and the county, you know, most counties, is that this isn't a one-time hit of 26%. It progressively goes down every year because of the assessment model they're looking at, the depreciation of their equipment and depreciation of the lines themselves. Any pipeline under the size of 10 inches will depreciate to almost a zero value in 16 years. And anything larger than that will depreciate itself almost to a zero in 25 years. So you can see the revenue will be dropping down every year as we go on. And it could be hitting some places as hard as 40%, or, you know, if you look into the future. I guess what we're doing is like we've met with the MLAs, we thought it was very important to meet with the town of Edson and the town of Hinton. We did the town of Hinton last week. We're asking for your support in putting a little pressure on our MLA, Martin Long, to let him know that you're not happy because this is going to affect our fair share communities. We don't know in what way today. Because we don't know exactly what scenario is going to end up with. The Deputy Minister told us they wanted D, but you guys probably want A, and maybe we'll settle for C and B. And we told them, no, we're not definitely on A. What we want to do is just have a fair share deal in helping the province and helping industry and all of us working together. So what we're doing is asking for your support. A lot of things that came about with this review, they didn't take into consideration the involvement that municipalities have with fair share groups like the town of Edson, the town of Hinton, the Evergreens Foundation, the school tax. What's going to happen to the school tax? A 26% hit on the school tax is going to be very detrimental to the local school district. The province can't tell us. Well, we never thought about that. We'll have to look at that situation. So there's many things that we feel are going to come right down the line and you know, be very honest with you guys, I'm not trying to scare you and I'm not saying it's going to happen. But I mean, we're going to have to look at things like the fair share. We're going to have to look at things like the Evergreen Foundation. Maybe the multiplex situation. It could be coming into play, the school tax. So there's a lot of things that are in limbo and we don't have any reason or rationale of why they're going this way. So it's even hard for us to defend which way we should go. So we're hoping that the RMA, our representatives, do have a meeting with the Minister, I believe, at the latter part of this month, on the 27th. I'm hoping that we can get something resolved. The sad thing is that the province came back and said they wanted to have this resolved by September 1st. And we're just in a very worried state at this time. Got any questions?
Thank you, Your Worship. I'll open it up to council if you have questions. Mayor Sarah. Thanks for taking the time, Mayor Glinsky, to speak to us today. I think we all should be concerned about this. This is just one issue. Where does it stop? What's the next thing that municipalities are going to be consulted on? I think that it's unfortunate that it seems to me, from what information has been shared, this is all about supporting industry. And I think that you would find in rural Alberta and communities such as ours, we want to support industry. But they also have to pay their fair share and be a part of the solution. We were fortunate in our part of the country that we all work well together. And I just don't think that the process that has occurred here has been collaborative at all. I know that the premier has stated in the local newspaper that no decisions have been made. But if no decisions have been made, then why are they not engaging more on this issue and and having those conversations and having those consultations? So I think this is scary because if they can do that to you, they can do certain things to us as well, taking away revenue streams. And quite frankly, we all are facing a huge amount of pressure right now with increased costs of maintaining infrastructure and reduced revenues from, you know, businesses that are struggling. And we all want to do our part, but there has to be a conversation. And I think the approach you're taking here is, let's just have a conversation about this and let's plan it out. You know, if you can plan something out over a few years, it makes a lot easier to deal with and getting hit with a 20% decrease in revenue in one year or so. That's my point of view. I certainly would like to support you as much as I can on this issue. But willing to hear what my council has to say and see how we can work together on this issue.
Well, thank you on that, Your Worship. You know, we thought we had a government that was open and transparent in this current government, and that doesn't appear to be happening. And this is the frustrating thing because this is a very important matter to not only counties or rural municipalities, but it affects all municipalities in this province. And not to have an open dialogue to discuss this is really alarming. And it almost makes you think that the agenda is already set. And that's what scares me. Is that agenda set already? Are we just going through a process?
Thank you, Jim, for the chair. I support what Mayor Zehara says himself and that too. And I noticed that even though you're coming back with us, industry has already taken a percentage cut on it already, and they're going to want another percentage cut. Now, I know that we're all hurting here. And there's companies out there not paying taxes and everything else because they're safe and can't make it. I don't truly believe that 100%, but working in that industry, they're still making a money. They could pay their taxes. They choose not to and that. You know, I remember sitting in council chambers here when this revenue sharing was coming for us the first time. We went through it second and third time and that. And I know we appreciate it, you guys, revenue sharing with us and cost sharing of this too and that. And we always knew that there was times when you could have cut us back and you never did. You were a good neighbor to us. I think we're a good neighbor to you. I believe, you know, we should all support you. Or every weekend and that with his writing letters, getting hold of Martin Long or whatever and that. So I think, you know, it's going to affect us. We you guys end up cutting us off and that, we have to do some soul searching here and really hard looking at our budget because it is going to affect our residents just like it's affecting yours. Maybe not as bad, but it will affect us all and that. So I think we should climb on board with you and support you on our weekend and that.
Would you like to comment back, Your Worship? No, you're good.
No, well, thank you for and I'll assure you as the mayor of Yellowhead County, I will work to try to for the best benefit for Edson also. I mean, we have to work together. I mean, we are one big community here. And that's a big concern.
Okay, Counselor Byers?
I think after the chair to Mayor Glinsky, I also share Mayor Zehara's perspective. I am certainly absolutely willing to contribute to a letter to our MLA and Premier to mention our distaste for this. But I'm not convinced that that will be a solution or a solution will come from that. I've noticed a few things the county administration has put in the paper regarding this. What other things have taken place in order to address this with the residents? Are there any other ways that we can work together to do this besides the letters? To engage the residents before September 1st?
I've had a number of people call me over the last two weeks with suggestions for going door to door and doing this and having town hall meetings. But with COVID-19, I think a lot of things are Did you lose me? Did you lose me?
Nope, you're back again.
No, with COVID-19, there are a lot of restrictions. And it's pretty hard to have like a public forum when we don't have the data to explain what's happening other than this is happening. So I think what we're trying to do is the media go to our local councils that we know are going to support us and keep pressure on our local MLAs. I think that's all we can do at the present time and try to work with government and try to get some rationale out of them as to why they don't want to tell us. Or force them into telling us, one way or the other. But I think if we keep the social media thing going, the local papers, we already had a legislation rally two weeks ago where we had a little over 100 mayors and councillors show up. So I think we just have to keep it out front in the open and in the public.
Come ahead, Counselor.
Through the chair, to Your Worship. I've always felt that when we had a voice, we should use that voice. And I think as councillors, we have that. And this really is unacceptable to be picking on the vulnerable population, which is exactly what it's doing now. Well, it's on taxpayers, but especially the old and the young with the school system and Evergreens Foundation. And what do they expect us to do, for instance, in Evergreens Foundation with the amount of seniors that we have that need housing now? And I just think it has to end somewhere. We need to speak up and have this end. Yes, we're in hard times and yes, we're in debt, but maybe sometimes we have to keep that debt. Not taking it off of the backs of people that we just cannot afford to take it off. So gladly support you.
Do you have a comment back?
Thank you, Jim.
Do you either, do you?
No, I said thank you.
Through the chair to Mayor Glinsky, thank you for coming here today. I am in agreement with Mayor Zehara as well as yourself that anytime someone comes to the table with a position rather than interests and concerns to negotiate, that's always a red flag. And so at the very least, we should be pressuring the province to explain the rationale and how this is going to benefit anyone. So yeah, I'm in full support of pressuring to find out the rationale behind this.
Counselor Curry.
Yes, thanks for coming again, Mayor Glinsky. Just echoing what everyone else has said. We have been so fortunate that we have had such a good working relationship with our county. And we definitely, I definitely support that we need to know the information and put pressure on because definitely the transparency is not there. So thank you for coming and keeping us in the loop.
Okay, everyone's talking is my chance to talk. Thank you, Your Worship, for the update. Some time ago, when the RUMA and AUMA was, you know, talking together, have we reached out to AUMA? Because right now it is a county issue, but I'm agreeing what I'm hearing in this room that they may come after us next. So I think if we could join together on this issue and see what we can do, because I believe everyone in this room is full support, but it's a matter of maybe rallying up because with COVID-19, it's very hard to have a public. But through letters, media, Zoom, we need to at least let them know that we are listening and we want definite answers. And I believe a September 1st deadline is a horrible deadline because, you know, talking the amount of money. So everything, I believe, what you heard in this room, we're all in full support. And I imagine Hinton is the same way.
Yes, Hinton is. And I would just like to answer your question. The AUMA was an active participant in these negotiations along with the RMA. But both of them were told they could not speak about it, talk about it until it was released on the 23rd. So they have been very strong and they've been strongly supporting the RMA in this whole endeavor.
Okay, I think unless we have any other questions, we'd like to thank you. And if you need your support, you know how to get ahold of us.
Okay, well, thank you again for allowing me to take some of your time and have a good evening.
Thanks, Jim.
Thanks. Thank you.
Okay, Steve, I believe our next delegation is council will be waiting. And I don't know who's speaking for them, but we will patiently wait for them. Always exciting to hear from youth council. I think we have Robert and Maggie.
And start my video? Hello? Is the video starting? Okay, okay. 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 Is it good? Okay, okay.
Is there a cover over your camera?
We're going to tease you, Maggie.
No, it's just not showing up that it's on, that my video is on, or you can't see me.
Will you be able to share your presentation?
No, there's no cover.
Okay, who do we have? Maggie. So Maggie, welcome, councillors. We can hear you. But we can definitely hear you. And your presentation should show up even though we can't see you. So feel free to go ahead.
Okay. Okay, they said that the presentation will show up even if they can't see me. Oh, they should see me now. Okay, so now. Okay, sorry, we're just getting it figured out. Share screen. And now. Okay. And
Oh, there we go.
There we go. Okay. Here is, okay, is it good now? Is it showing for you guys?
We can, yep, go ahead.
Okay, okay, so I, okay, we're good. So Robert and I will be presenting the plastic bag fee that we've presented previously, but it's been the plastic bag ban or the tax before. So we're going to be presenting from youth council on behalf of youth council. So first, we're just going to go over some negative impacts of plastic bags in the environment. We have gone into more depth on this in the past on the plastic bag ban. So we're just going to go over it a little bit. So first, they're made of non-renewable resources. And their production releases harmful chemicals into the atmosphere such as methane and ethylene, which contributes and adds to poor air quality. And they contaminate waterways and oceans, which harms aquatic life. And the plastic bags can take anywhere between 10 to 1,000 years to break down if they're not ingested first. But they don't actually break down into nothing. They just break down into microplastics. And so they don't actually break down. And then their production requires large amounts of oil to operate. And the local animals can also be affected by them by choking on them if swallowed or by suffocating if their heads are stuck in them. Okay, Robert. Okay, and now Robert's just going to go over this slide.
Okay, so some of the pros to a plastic bag fee would be that it allows those that use reusable bags to avoid the fee. And then it targets the consumer who are the ones that are who are using these bags, and then it inflicts more change. And then some of the cons would would be that it'll receive a lot of backlash from those who believe the fee is too high or who believe that the fee is not necessary. And then
So some of the fee recommendation in agreeance with Christina Seedles from the Recycling Council of Alberta. She recommends that we start at a 25 cent fee per every bag purchased and would increase by 5 cents to 10 cents every year. So if we decided to go any lower than 25 cents, it wouldn't be noticed by consumers and it wouldn't elicit any change in behavior, which is definitely not what we want. And any higher than 25 cents may receive too much backlash from consumers. But it would still guarantee change and it would be better than having it any lower. And the reason that 25 cents is perfect is because it was the amount recommended from someone from the Recycling Council of Alberta and is the amount used by Vancouver for their disposable single-use cups. So we are following the footsteps of someone that has had effective change.
So for a suggested timeline, we thought that having, if we had a warning period and a direct changeover period would be good. So for a warning period, we would have an advanced warning period of six months that would allow businesses to change the amount of plastic bags they have if they believe that they do not need that many. And then in the direct changeover phase, you could, instead of using a phase implementation, youth council suggests to use a strategy of direct changeover which allows the adoption of the fee to happen on any given day that council decides on after the period of six, after the six-month period instead of implementing it in stages.
So like I said before, we are following Vancouver's footsteps because they have implemented a 15 cent fee on every paper bag purchased. And then it was raised to 25 cents the following year. And it was also attached to all disposable cups and was the first city to implement a law like it in Canada. And beginning January 21st of 2021, plastic and compostable shopping bags will be completely prohibited. So they can't use it anymore.
And then in conclusion, the a suggested fee of 25 cents will be attached to every plastic bag sold at all businesses established within the Edson Town limits and will be increased by 5 to 10 cents every year, a warning period of six months which will be given in order to allow all businesses to get rid of plastic bag stock and implement suggestive alternatives.
So the fee that we suggested can be debated, obviously by council. It's not a definite amount. It's just what we suggested and what the Recycling Council of Alberta suggested. So that's it.
Are you doing more than one presentation?
Pardon?
Oh, no, I just wanted to get another one. So thank you for your presentation. I will open it up to council. Counselor Curry.
Thank you for you guys' presentation. Just my first question for you guys, I'm sorry, through the chair. Where would the, how would the, so the 25 cents, it's taken by the stores and then do they keep that 25 cents? Or does that 25 cents come back to the municipality?
So the plan was that the retailers would collect the money or the government would collect the money and then it would be put towards the recycling depot.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Wilkinson.
Okay, through the chair. Have you checked at all if Vancouver is able to keep up with this timeline with the COVID?
Uh, no, I haven't checked that. I just researched what they have done in the past and if it's still working. But I haven't checked in the recent months if it has still worked, but
I agree with all of this, but when COVID first started in the grocery stores, they didn't want you to take your own bags back. So it really was a step backwards, I felt. I ended up going and using plastic bags at first until you could take your own back. So I just wondered if this timeline kept up. I mean, COVID has changed just so many things, I think, for all of us.
Yeah.
I really like all the work you've done on this and I think you'll be a youth council. It is remembered for all the work you've done on the plastic bags. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other councillors? Counselor Byers?
Also the chair to Counsel Wolfing and Counsel Pabell. Thank you for your work on this. I'm excited to see something like this debated within council chambers. I feel that a lot of the businesses have been hearing about this and they have encouraged us to give them a warning of a couple of years. And I think that the talks about it publicly, locally, as well as, you know, Sophie's implementing their bans and other communities, that it's something that's becoming a little bit more normal to to look at a different way of using plastic to, to look at a different way of using plastic bags and, and thinking about the environment, so thank you for doing this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Councillor Curry.
Just through the chair, I would just say that I do personally do support the ban. I think that we have discussed this numerous times. Our business, when it went to the business chamber and such, they asked to start kind of locally and to give them time, and some stores have slowly made those changes and we've seen that. And we've definitely seen it regionally, Jasper has already done this, implemented. And I think that we are at a position where we can move forward as a community and I love that you said timelines. I think giving people plenty of time, that was the biggest concern with the businesses, is making sure that they have what they needed, they had an overstock. So, I do think that that's an easy conversation we could have too, to say, is six months enough? But I do agree with you, I think it's time, and I think 25 cents is a good starting point, because I know myself, I am as guilty as the rest, five cents doesn't really hit me hard enough to think about it. But I do think that it's time and, and also our recycling depot cannot get rid of plastic. They cannot, they struggle, it is not recyclable, it is, nobody wants it.
Yeah.
I think this is really the time, and I think people are ready for it.
Okay, then councillor Wilkinson.
Okay, just one more question, were you also thinking of the disposable single-use cup charge as well?
Uh, so, so for right now, we were just focusing on single-use bags instead of single-use plastics. But it was discussed in the last Youth Council meeting that we had, that Christina Seedle from the Recycling Council of Alberta said that Canada was planning on doing a single-use plastic ban, but we were just focusing on the single-use plastic bag tax or fee.
It would be nice if one time we could do that and clean up so much garbage and count, really.
Okay, thank you, councillor.
All right, through the chair, thank you councillor Pevill and Wolfing, good job. I had the pleasure of being on Youth Council and watching this from the start, getting developed all the way through to this presentation, and I would I am in full support and I would encourage our administration to flush this out in a bylaw, I assume, and then we can debate the specifics of it. So, I, I look forward to it, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and once again, thank you, council, Youth councillor Pevill and Wolfing for your presentation. As councillor Sorensen stated, it's been remarkable to see this over the last number of years and the work and the effort in the past and Youth Council has on this issue. I think it's been very well thought out, a lot of research and a lot of conversations, and I think that we've had those conversations, it's been out in the public for, I would argue, a year and a half now, and now I think it's the time that we as a council need to implement something. There's always gonna be, as we talked about at Youth Council, there's always gonna be a segment of the population that is not gonna like it, they're gonna hate it, hate us for it. But we're, we're supposed to be leaders, we have to make these types of decisions for the betterment of our community for decades to come. And Edson is known regionally as a leader on environmental issues and I'm proud of that because we are an oil and gas town, usually oil and gas towns don't have that in, in their back pocket, but we are, and I think this is a great step forward. So, as councillor Sorensen said, I, I hope administration will bring back something in the future that we can debate and, and hopefully implement. Okay, does any other councillors have a question? Okay, it's my turn to talk, thank you councillors. Two concerns I have, I'm all in favor of the user fee, because I'd be a guy that I forget my reusable bags. I, if I'm using them, I agree I have to pay. Do you guys explore the options, not that plastic can't be recycled, it's very expensive, so like with tires where they have a charge, and I agree until it's throughout the entire province, if the money collected would go towards funding of recycling plastics or whatever money you collect, use it for recycling, because it can be recycled, but it's very expensive. What is your thoughts on that?
Well, so the money collected from the fee would be put towards the recycling depot in whatever ways that they would need to use it. So, hopefully, it would be put towards recycling plastic and reduce the cost of that.
The other little comment I'd have for you is I thank you for it, it's a very hot topic, and like it said in the room, and it made a step backwards with the COVID-19. Hopefully, that simmers down, because right now, I believe we had a lot of feedback on because of the stores were not using it. So, I applaud your work, keep up the good, good work, and let's talk in the future, it'd be something to great to move forward, so thank you.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Thanks Maggie, thanks Robert.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
You're welcome. Okay, moving forward to reports from staff, and I believe our first one is a member of the Municipal Health and Safety Policy HS5. And who's making presentation on that?
Good evening councillor and mayor, councillor and mayor. So, you guys got my report to councillor, I think that changes and the policy with the one-sentence addition. Did you guys have any questions or comments on this?
Yes, your worship. Thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you for your presentation and I'm in full support, thank you. Does anyone else have a support comment? Okay, we know, does any other councillor have it? I echo the mayor, I'm in support, I like the changes, so I think you did a wonderful job. Okay, that was easy? Yeah.
Thank you.
And don't feel like you have to say if you don't want to, but you're more than welcome to. Yes, there's part of God. Okay, staff compensation, that would be our guy that brought in the thunder and lightning when he walked in the room.
That was me, to be honest, I was hoping it would be more robust debate on that last one.
We're saving it for you.
Not quite feeling ready yet. Good evening, council.
Okay.
Okay. Anytime you're ready.
There we go. Good evening, what we're asking you for tonight is some, are some guiding principles on our compensation strategy for non-union employees. Okay, all right, perfect. Lecturer here, there, that was distracting. Good evening, council. We're asking you for some guiding principles on our compensation strategy for non-union employees. Though we've provided some numbers for contextual purposes, I'd like to reinforce that there is no budgetary ask at this point in time. Few would argue with the principle that we should, we should deliver the right payers events and the best professionals that we can find for the best possible price. Having a competent, having competent, experienced managers and professionals in this organization will help us deliver increasingly improved services while being increasingly prudent with taxpayer assets and resources. We have some tremendous human resources in this organization today. Smart, devoted, driven employees dedicated to providing improved services to the Edson community. But vacancies do occur, when they do, it's my job to go out and find you the best possible candidates. In order to do so, we need to be strategic in how we approach salary compensation. So. Why, what does a good compensation strategy achieve? Michael E. Porter once wrote a widely cited essay on the subject of strategy for the Harvard Business Review, in that essay, he remarked, quote, "Strategic positioning attempts to achieve sustainable competitive advantage by preserving what is distinct about a company. It means performing different activities from rivals, but performing similar activities in different ways. Like a computer company in a market that's saturated with computers, we need something that sets us apart. It's not enough that, it's not enough that we have a great product, we need to be able to persuade our customers," quote unquote, "that we're a unique product, one that can meet their needs like no other can. Unlike a computer company," I think I'm hitting the thing there, hold this up, "unlike a computer company, we care very much about the quality of people we're trying to attract, the quality of the customer we're trying to attract. This is all a more reason we need to think carefully about how our compensation is structured and what sets it apart, rather than simply how much." Did I do something?
Sir, now do not get any lightning involved and we'll carry on fine.
I'm afraid to touch anything. Pardon me, okay, so we're talking about strategy, strategy being what sets us apart. What does good strategic compensation look like? Number one, it attracts, good compensation not only helps us attract people, it helps us ensure we're attracting the right kind of people. Well, money can't and should not be the only way to draw great managers and professionals to the organization, it's difficult to do that when the money isn't there. Professionals today know now more than ever what they're worth. If we don't keep, keep the pace, we will miss out. It retains, at least to an extent, the greatest indicator of whether someone sticks around in an organization isn't necessarily money, but more so good culture and a positive atmosphere. However, different ways of compensating people will definitely impact positively or negatively our ability to retain them. It builds and reinforces, whoa. There we go, it builds and reinforces culture. How we compensate our people sends them a message about how we value them. A compensation policy, for example, that was just all money and no benefits at all would send a message that we value your services, but we don't really value you. That is to say, we don't value your health or your work-life balance or the fact that you have a family at home, et cetera. All three of these things are important, but attraction remains our biggest challenge of the three, so I'd like to focus a bit more on that. Why are we having a difficult time consistently attracting the kind of people this organization and this community deserve? I can provide three. Number one, we're not competitive, in a pure number sense, we're at the percentile mark of 42.7%. While this isn't awful, it's certainly not putting us at the front of the pack either. Number two, our regional positioning isn't great. While we can and sometimes do attract great professionals from our local community, these hires generally hail from the private sector. Well, I think it's a great idea to occasionally bring in people with no municipal experience to give us fresh perspectives, I wouldn't be here if we didn't. We still need to be able to attract people with a municipal background. Unfortunately, very few municipally experienced people live in the Edson area, which means we're asking them to relocate, which means we need to provide excellent reasons why they should choose Edson over any other number of hiring municipalities, 42%, 42.7% doesn't help us do that. We're not being strategically proactive. Remember, we said strategy is what sets us apart. Employers in general are doing a poor job of adapting to the way the labor market has changed. There was a time when someone with five years in a company would be considered rookie, nowadays, that person is practically a veteran. Yet compensation structures all over Canada are still modeled on assumptions of 30 years of 30-year employees. The marketplace is, the marketplace is changing and has changed, and we haven't set ourselves apart. The good news is we have the opportunity to do that, because others are lagging as well. So, what can we do about it? Today, we haven't established a target on which to base, establish our base wages. Setting a target helps us to ensure that wages are aligned with our organizational strategy. Setting a percentile target ensures that we move as the municipal job market moves. It also holds our place in the strategic queue, whether, wherever we decide that should be. While we can and certainly ought to be thinking about our compensation policy as a whole, deciding what percentile we're targeting on the base is an essential component of that. Where do we want to be, do we want to be comparable, do we want to be at 50%, or more competitive at 65 or 75% mark? Keep in mind that setting a target doesn't mean applying across-the-board increases or taking all-at-once approach. It merely means positioning ourselves to get there at some point in the future. In addition to setting a percentile target, we can also look at increasing benefits. By benefits, I mean monetary and non-monetary, anything that increases our employees' quality of life and the enjoyment of their work. There are benefits we could institute that today that would incur few, if any, costs. For example, a flat vacation structure, a generous annual vacation allowance that applies equally to first-year employees as well as long-tended ones. This could give us a dramatic boost in terms of our ability to attract new talent. Or, there are other benefits that aren't cost-neutral, but that might punch a lot of the weight. An example might be increasing our active living allowance, currently that's set at $250 a year. If we were to advertise wages that were $1,000 more than they are today, the resulting impact would barely register. If, however, we were to state that we have a $1,000 active living allowance, that's going to have a more significant impact. Not only would it be more likely to attract people, but it's going to attract the sort of person who's energetic, vibrant, the kind of person who exercises a higher level of self-care, and people who do that kind of thing tend to outperform those who don't. So, what's the ask? We're seeking your input on the strategic direction we should be taking to attract, to attract the best possible professionals in a cost-responsible way. What sets the town of Edson apart, what should? It's not so much a question of whether we want to be highly competitive as an employer, I think we do, it's, it's how we should go about that. What that will result in is a compensation policy that will reinforce the strategy and set us apart. This policy can and will change and grow over time as well as our wage and benefit structure, but the strategy will remain in place and guided in the coming years. I'm looking forward to your input on this critically important discussion.
Okay, thank you for your presentation, councillors, your worship. Colin, thank you very much for taking the time and presenting today, and I think it's important to note that what we're talking about and what you stated in your presentation is really the strategy and what we're looking to achieve over the longer term, not necessarily what the dollars and cents are today and tomorrow. I think we've been very fortunate to have a really good staff, really, really good managers over the years, and I think we've seen through COVID-19, they stepped up to the plate majorly. And I know our council certainly appreciates that with what's been going on, and I think we are competing as a community, as an organization, not only with the region, but right across Alberta, right across Canada. I get the municipal world digest every day and there's jobs everywhere, and it's really, really hard to attract, especially as more and more experienced people retire, they're moving on to, to bigger communities. So, being a smaller community with not a lot of amenities like you would have in a bigger center, unless you're looking to move here because of family or if you're looking to have that outdoor lifestyle, it's really hard to attract those types of folks. So, I think there, there should be some movement, I think, you know, very base, we need to be looking at a 50th percentile and then look at maybe more longer-term moving that up. And I was surprised to see here that right now, the health spending account, correct me if I'm wrong, we're at zero, we don't have a health spending account?
That's correct.
My work, I even have a health spending account in, you know, pretty small business, so those are, I think, sort of some of the things that we should be looking at. They have less financial impacts in some of those salary adjustments, but can have a huge impact on, on attracting and retaining employees. But I, I think there's certainly room for growth in this area, especially as we're trying to attract higher-quality talent in some of those more strategic management roles. Okay, thank you, councillor Byer.
Through the chair, to Colin, thank you for the presentation. I recall this, the other segment of this study meeting reported to council regarding council's wage. And, you know, I, I knew this was coming forward and as I saw it on the agenda, I was trying to remember the percentile that we had, I think it was 50, right, for council? Okay, and, thank you. And when I was thinking, okay, well, let's just do 50, that would, that would make sense, and then as I started to read through the, the information, I realized that they're not, we're not, I'm not, I can't compare apples to apples, council to administration on this, and that when we were attracting, trying to attract people in our community, trying for council, it's a lot different than trying to attract child administrators that we're competing with across the province in Canada, so completely different market. I, I think 50 is, is the minimum, I, I would certainly be interested in more. I think when we, when, when we compare the communities that, you know, are kind of similar size to us, and, and when we're trying to attract people that are going to give our organization exponential growth, we, we need to, you know, wages is a part of that, although, as mayor said, I, I think there's some non-financial benefits as well. When I was comparing what we had and what other communities have, it's a little bit of a. it's a little bit of a, a little bit of a shock to see what, you know, if I was an employer or an employee, like for a job, and I saw this, you know, I could easily cross off a few communities just based on that. But I was curious, do you know what the most, within our organization and staff, do you know what the most popular cost-neutral benefits are amongst the people that are employed here based on what you had listed?
Through the chair, thank you for your help. We would, we'd have to delve a little bit more deeply with our staff to get a question as to what. You're asking what the most popular, what the most popular ideas would be?
Right, yes. Whether it's like increased vacation days, personal days, whether the active living allowances are something. I know there's a cost to those, but not as much as a salary. You know, if someone were to have one of those, I think, five or six items, what would be the preference, I guess? You're just curious about that.
I don't think I'm comfortable venturing an answer to that question, but I would be interested in going back and asking the staff their thoughts.
Okay.
Okay. Counselor Sorensen.
I wasn't sure if I just got the constant scenarios or anything.
Through the chair. When was the last time we looked at bands? It seems like we just looked at bands a couple of years ago or ranges to administration.
Yeah, I can talk to you, Colin. So through the chair, Counselor Sorensen. It was just after this council was elected that we presented really what I would describe as our first attempt at a comprehensive or significant compensation policy, which included the banding. At that time, we did use a fiftieth percentile as a target in our enthusiasm for moving forward and clearing up some other challenges that we had. One of the things we neglected to consider in that policy was the general movement of inflation over that period of time. And so while we targeted the fiftieth percentile, what would now be, I think, three years ago, we basically, that from fifty to forty-two is basically the inflationary period that took place over that time. And so in the new policy, and something Colin has brought forward as a concern of his with the policy is the band should move with inflation as they go so that you stay in those ranges. And so in a renewed policy that would be brought forward to council, we would attempt to address it in that way so that we wouldn't be lagging in the same manner that we did. So the philosophy was sound, but we didn't execute it with a mechanism that kept it current over the three-year period.
Yeah, go ahead, follow.
I am in support of relooking at this policy. I do believe a fiftieth percentile is the right way to go with additional cost-neutral and maybe even some for, for cost benefits. I think that's the way to really attract the newer generation. So I'd be in support of that, and I'd also be in support of tying it to inflation, either positive or negative, inflationary. Yeah. So, yeah, I'd like to see this again. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Wilkerson.
Through the chair, I've got just a few questions. When you were talking that being regionally isolated was a negative in hiring people, I wonder if there are any statistics since COVID. Like, I know on my Facebook on a Monday morning, everyone has been out either floating down the river, going to the hoodoos, going to Jasper. Like, I think the whole world has changed, and they're enjoying the rural life that we have. And I don't actually think there'll be a negative on us after this is over. And also the flexible work hours and remote work options. I think both of those probably are going to be much larger in all of our lives than what they were before. So they could easily be different, I would expect. Now, what statistics did you have for saying that those who had self-care were more productive employees?
Through the chair, thank you. I don't have the statistics right in front of me, but it is, it is something that I've come across in the past that, that one of the benefits of providing these kinds of programs is that employees who take care of themselves in a more holistic sense and don't allow themselves to be consumed by their career alone tend to outperform and outlast those who don't do those things.
Okay, if you don't mind sending me your data on that, I'd really like to read, to read that myself.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I think, I think just to add to that, there's, yeah, there's a law. I don't think it will be hard to provide consistent statistical data that supports encouragement of self-care, which includes things like psychological, social, and physical well-being as a return on investment. I'm, I'm taking this out of my memory, so please, please forgive me. We'll go and look and find it. My understanding is that for every dollar that you invest in something like an active living cost, it returns actually seven dollars in terms of its value.
Oh, just as prevention does of anything.
Yeah, so it's, it, it, it does things like reduce sick time directly, but it also includes retention. Those are the things that actually cost the most money. When you lose an employee, it costs you one and a half times their salary to replace them. And so if you can go from a turnover rate of, you know, ten or fifteen percent to five percent, there is actually huge monetary savings in those period of times. And so there's also that element of the savings, not just the fact that you have healthier employees and healthier people are just more productive people, but there's also a very real strategic implication to having employees that, even if they're not all that healthy, but they think you're a great employer, and so they stay with you for five years instead of three years, you get a very real financial return on that investment as well.
For sure, with self-worth and retention, I can see that, that you would. But, yeah, it's just interesting because you do see people too that are absorbed in self-care rather than their work. So I just wondered where the statistics sort of work on that. And I would really like it if you could bring us back some statistics on what the current employees of the town value before we discuss any compensation, because now does not seem to be a time to discuss compensation when we're doing so badly.
Okay, thank you, Counsel Wilson. Counsel Perry.
Through the chair, thank you for bringing this forward. Like most things, I really like this when it's in a policy and that we have set our standards. And we've already done that with council. And I think it's only fair that we make sure that we're following that protocol and that same process with our own employees. I'm really comfortable with that fifty percentile, fifty percent percentile, and then looking at the other ways that we can. And I think it's really important that we do touch base with the employees of what is the things that bring them there. I know myself personally, and I know within my own personal organization of work, it is those things that, you know, the wage, yes, and that needs to be competitive, but it is definitely, vacation is huge, personal days, and just being a part of collective agreements. Those are the two things that are often fought for the most because of quality of life. And I definitely agree with the health spending and such, and have tons of my own personal data galore on that. And one of the biggest things being is a huge decrease in benefits. And so that is often one of the biggest benefits to an organization is the substantial decrease in the benefits that we pay when we put into staff. So I know that that is why most organizations, that is retention, but a decrease in benefits. And there's lots of statistics to show that that has been there. So I would love to see this back in policy, and I would love to see with more information from the town staff, what they would like to see as those neutral. And I'm okay with even looking at some of the ones that are not neutral cost as far as the health spending and the active living.
Okay.
One other question.
Kate, one more. I think everyone else has spoken.
Do your staff value professional development? I'm wondering if that should be part of your plan, as an extra thing. I know with our teaching staff, that's very, it's a real drawing card for Grand Childhood School Division, actually their professional development policy. So I wonder if that's something to look at as well.
Through the chair, thank you. Yes, they do value professional development, and we do provide that. It's not so much a policy compensation item, it's so much as it's a budgetary item within departments. But we have professional development. Each manager within his or her department is responsible for budgeting that and working through that with, with the staff.
I think, if I may add to that, through the chair, I think professional development also is, often is in direct relation to what benefits the organization and what's important in terms of the organizational priorities and those types of things. And so I just make a slight distinction between general professional development versus something like tuition support programs. I think those can certainly be created as more personal benefits to individual employees, whereas just generally wanting to have a well-trained, well-educated staff that is staying abreast of the professional developments in their organizations is something that we just think as a, as an organization is something that we need to do. So I do think there is definitely a critical component to staff engagement is whether or not you allow them to continue to grow as professionals, to engage with the professional associations, to, you know, be discussing the latest developments in their fields. And then there's another element of it in terms of their personal growth and their personal pursuits of additional educational requirements. We're developing a program that would support that as well is something that we've talked about at length.
Well, I think any of those plans would have to go with their professional growth plan of what they're doing as we improve. Yeah.
Kate, is there any other counsel? Are you good?
Okay, I have a few comments. When we're looking at the fifty percent percentile, that doesn't concern me to change. I believe overall, we've done a lot of changes and our satisfaction is good. But when, I would look more at if we're targeting an individual person through the interviewing, because what's important to one may not be important to others. So I'll use an example, maybe someone's health, you know, the health benefits of doing that. But on the other person, maybe the education. And I'm more apt to, because there's the argument, people are going to big cities. Some people, young or old, depending where they are in their career, we need to, if we're looking for a job, let's reach out to individual. We've done interviews. We've done a fine job of hiring people, like you had commented, not in the field. But sometime with the changing world, the individual may like the idea saying, okay, there's a moving incentive. So if you move to Edson, we will help you do, do this. Or even bringing the individual in because they're trying to sell the house, we may say, we can help you, you know, we will pay your rent or some kind of a temporary solution to bring them here because they're trying to sell the house. We say, well, we'll give you an incentive. You're agreeing a regular salary. We're going to pay your rent for the next six months, for an example, as you sell your home. So I wouldn't play with the percentiles too much because all of it costs us money. I think we're doing a wonderful job, but we'll concentrate on more selling Edson. What can we do different than another comparable town to our side? Their individual's looking for the job. And, you know, strike more on a temporary cash flow because I believe that we're doing a wonderful job. If we weren't, we would have all kinds of vacancy. And I think when we got a report back on satisfaction of working in staff, what we were ten years ago, we are today, we have high satisfaction in employees. And when we're looking for maybe moving up the ladder, some of, you know, someone that's been on the job for five to six years and they are capable of moving up the ladder, there might be an incentive. If we move you up, we will put some kind of education program in place that we can offer you schooling. So not too excited on the numbers, but I think we're doing fine. And I, we're not a red flag up, oh, my God, like some other towns that all these high positions, they can't find people. So that's just my twenty-five cents worth for, there's my deposit first plastic bag.
Thank you very much. True point. Certainly, there are flexible benefits programs out there. When I was at the university, you could, you could choose different kind, you know, if you wanted to focus at all on dental, you could. If you wanted to focus in, if you wanted to, you would choose your, whether you have a catalog of benefits plans or something that more thread there. Anything you had leftover, you could divvy up to a healthcare spending account or to a wellness spending account. There are costs to that. The more flexible and variable those things become, the more, the more the rates for each, each program goes up. But happy to explore that option. Me personally, just stressed me out every year because I'd get decision paralysis and didn't know what to pick and trying to figure out who was going to have a cat.
I might need to go to the podiatrist this year. I don't know. Do I check that box or not?
Yeah, so, but lots of people really enjoy it. So, you know, that's an option we could certainly explore. What I'm hearing from, from the committee is the general consensus that fifty percent is a good target. Let's explore other means of creative compensation to become more competitive and solicit some staff feedback in the process. Is that apt?
Go ahead.
If I may, I think Colin has encapsulated what I think we've heard in terms of the fiftieth percentile. Just before we conclude the conversation, I'd like to explore a little bit more council's appetite for some of these non-monetary adjustments in terms of potential, you know, flexible working or those types of things. But just before I kind of ask that question specifically. So my personal philosophy on this is I actually believe the fiftieth percentile is the right place to be for a number of reasons, most of which for me personally are, I don't want the amount that someone's getting paid to be the number one reason why they choose to join our organization. I don't want people to not choose our organization because we're not competitive, but I don't want them to be choosing to come to work for the town of Edson because they get the most money being here. I don't think that's the, and not to say that people that choose that can also be, you know, high performers or good cultural contributors, but I worry a little bit about that going against our larger organizational philosophy, which is, you know, collaboration, creativity, and service-based motives for what we do. And so I think we can manage attracting more of the cultural fit we want by highlighting other elements of our organization that drive those types of thought processes and those types of attributes. I would note that I think we are doing that. We're not able to comment on it specifically, but what I will say is that when we post for management positions, we are seeing many people who are currently employed in other municipalities in the region submitting applications to work for our organization. So I think we're developing that solid reputation on the regional level. We want to go beyond that. And, and, you know, I think the mayor suggested accurately that when you start talking about the senior management level in the municipal context, there's no reason why I think we wouldn't want to be attractive, you know, across the country in terms of looking for people that can fill it, fill the voids that we have in our organization. So I think we're on the right track. I think we are developing that. I think adding some other elements can even take us into the next level. So for example, one of the conversations we've had as council director previously, and another conversation is to consider, you know, flexible working arrangements as a consideration. And so we started to talk about, well, what does it look like to have compressed work weeks or these four-day work weeks and all these types of things? And I think we circled back to personal choice in those being a higher value. And that's where we would suggest something like going to higher levels of vacation entitlements and also not tying those two years of service. So for example, you come and join our organization, you just immediately get six weeks of holidays, and that's just what you get for coming and being a part of our organization as something that in our informal polls, just having a few conversations, are something that have really, I think, changed the attractiveness of our organization. And if we want to be, I think, extremely attractive, instead of saying something like, hey, we're going to let you have every other Friday off, some organizations try to do it that way, saying something like, hey, we'll just give you eight weeks holidays, and then you can choose how and when you use those. Instead of us saying it's every other Friday, if you prefer to do a different model, it improves the flexibility of those types of things. And I use that specific example because I think if you were to put that out there into the marketplace, that is something that would clearly establish us as someone who was far ahead of the curve in terms of the offerings that are currently standard out there. We really prefer working and maximizing those low-cost or no-cost benefits and vacation periods, although they're not without impact. They don't drive a direct monetary cost as well. So I'm curious how council feels about that type of dynamic. Is that the type of thing you would like us to explore? Do you have that level of appetite for us to become an organization that truly has a strategic advantage because we're doing something differently than other municipalities?
Go ahead.
Thanks for that. And I think one of the comments made through the chair is absolutely correct. The world's changed, and we're seeing, we're going to see things being, and business being conducted in much different. We're gonna see things being and business being conducted in much different ways. Um, you know, we are at a zero point nine schedule currently. I know that we want to be ensure that we're back to a full schedule next year. I know some employees really enjoy this zero point nine schedule. Some do not, obviously, because it does have financial impacts. But I think those those are areas we need to explore. Um, to see where um. Where, what would make us uh the most attractive? Eight weeks of holidays sounds a little too generous, my.
Sounds like a teacher to me.
Uh, a little generous, but um, you know, where are we currently at? I guess I need to know. What do we offer right now for vacation time? Um, sometimes having those those like, wow, they give eight weeks. That's really, really great to really attract people. But I know from where we sit uh out in the public, uh, may not be uh. Translating so well, even though it's probably maybe the best thing for the community and for the organization. So I need to see that. Um, see what other communities are doing. I always like to look at comparatives of of similar-sized communities. Uh, but I'm all open to looking at flexible work schedules. Uh, when I say that, uh, that does not mean you live in Ontario and you work for the town of Edson, you still have to be here in the local community. Uh, but if you have young kids at home, you might wanna spend more time at home, especially with what's going on with COVID. Uh, with kids maybe doing online learning, that sort of thing. Uh, different family dynamics, um, open to that, open to health spending. Open to looking at some vacation time options and thinking outside of the box. We think outside the box, I think, uh, and do something a little different. Might get a little heat for that, but I think it will set our organization up best for the long term. Um, and I think that's all we need to do.
Okay, uh, councillor Byer.
Uh, the chair to administration. Um, I echo the mayor's comments. Um, I'm totally fine with taking off outside the box. I just wanna see the data with with a comparable community. So I don't know what normal or um municipal organizations give for these uh holidays. I I I'm not uh in in look with that. Um, so knowing what what is the norm um would be helpful.
Okay, go ahead. Chair, I'm correcting my turn wrong. I think this is where he referenced early in his presentation, that model of thirty-year employees changing, right? And and so uh, we have a few employees who've been with us for a long, long, long time. And I believe the longest. Um, in management are now only one or two of the up to eight weeks holidays. Um, and and so largely what we're suggesting is is that. That model just doesn't make sense anymore because it's incredibly unlikely. Um, and the changing dynamic that people will be with an organization for that period of time. Uh, I think it's a, it's about fifteen years of service in the management level to get to six weeks of holidays. Is is I think where we stand. That's just kind of where we're at right now. Um, and so um. Uh, a- again, we think relatively low cost, but high impact opportunities. And that's the place where we think there's something.
Okay, councillor.
Councillor, the chair to administration, I am uh totally open to looking at um a variety of methods on. Uh, outside the box and innovative and um. My my only concern is that there is some kind of evidence to suggest that they will be attractive, either to our current employees or to the population in general. So, yeah, I just, yeah, I'd be open to it for sure.
Okay, thank you councillor, welcome to me.
Through the chair. When you say the norm and discussing other municipalities, I think we as a council, we work for citizens of Edson. I think we need to find what the norm is in our community as well. And then, of course, we can think of different ways past that, but I would like to know what the norm is here. For instance, at Repsol, what holiday systems do they have? How many weeks of vacation? Because I think that's who we're working with and that's who really you're accountable to as employees.
Okay, there's one councillor, Curry.
Um, I would just echo what I've heard around the table. I'm all overseeing creative and different ways of doing it. Um. Yeah, eight weeks sounds large at first, so I would like to see the comparables, but I also know that um. Extreme long differences between when your holidays increase actually gets to a point, I know myself personally, it demotivates you. Um, and it actually gets to that point that you're like, this is ridiculous. Um, so I would like to, yeah, see different ways of doing that. And it might not be that it's right off the bat as fast as that, but maybe it's a faster increase. So it's two years, four years, six years. Versus the traditional, but I'm open to seeing all that in the different ways. Um, and I am in full support of flexible um remote working programs. Um, I think right now we've been talking about the benefits to the staff, um, but I think what we're forgetting is the benefits to the community. So we have many, many staff that work outside different hours, they work evenings, they work weekends. Um, and allowing them to create a schedule that works for what they do in their role with the town of Edson. And then allows them also to use that as freedom for themselves, I think is a win-win for both the organization and the staff. Um, and I myself use it um in my own job to do that. So I provide more to my company. Um, and it with that, I get a day to really that. So I think it's not just a, as you know, as far as citizens go in that. I think it is a win to our community to allow that flexibility. Um, so, yeah, I would like to see those, but definitely outside box, thinking for sure.
Go ahead.
May I respond? Thank you, through the chair. Um, a a couple of things, just in in the general sense of what other municipalities are doing. We're very normal. And employers in general are are very normal in this. So this is a bit of the, an interesting element for me is is is. Seeing when the trend is going to start to to catch up with reality. Uh, it takes twenty-five years to to reach full vacation threshold. Um, in our organization and in most of our competitor organizations, and I'm sure probably in most private sector organizations in the community as well. Um, but that's just not what the job market looks like anymore. My, you know, if if we have people who have consistently held. Four or five years at this job, four or five years at that job, that that's 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 staying power. We're not, we're not looking at you as a job offer, we're looking at you as a community individual, but we're also asking you to start all over again. In in terms of your vacation. So, um, absolutely, I mean, we we can provide a bit um more data on on that subject. We have some of that data, uh, but I would stress that that a part of this is is being more competitive by by setting ourselves apart. And that may incur being able to to stand out in some ways. On the remote, on the remote work, um, absolutely. Um, COVID has taught us in the job market a lot about remote, remote work. This is something that, um, in my opinion, has been coming for a long time, but but we just kind of needed a push. Very unhappy push in this instance. Uh, we as an organization learned about, uh, did have a lot of organizational learning about remote work. What that looks like, what's good about it, what's not so good about it, um, how things change. Um, other organizations have as well, and that I believe and anticipate is going to become more and more of an offering. Um, in the future, in the job market in general, and and it is something that that I think is worth exploring. For an organization such as ours, I'm not sure we'll ever have, you know, positions that could be entirely remote work. I'm not even sure how how that would work. Um, but, you know, a a day or two a week to to work at home and catch up with your emails and. Um, I I found my personal experience is is that I was much more productive with that kind of transactional work. At home, when I had to be there. Um, not as productive at doing what a huge, is a huge component of my job. Being here, building relationships, finding new work to do. So, you know, there there are learnings around that that I think would benefit us in in years.
Good, go ahead, um, Mr. Byer.
Just as part of the conversation or through the chair, um, I think one of the things that we could do looking at policy is take into account previous service history with other. Industries or other municipalities to say, hey, we will match your years of service. So you have ten years uh service. You will get those additional weeks, you're not gonna lose those. I don't know currently if that is taken into consideration as a part of your contract negotiations. But I know my my uncle, he used to be a greater operator. And for years and years and years, and the town was able to coax some over me. The sole reason being, he was able to take his vacation time with him. Otherwise, he was not going because he's, he was a greater operator for for so so long. So. You build that into the policy where your years of service can can play into that. Um, I I think it would be a huge win. Especially if we're trying to attract some experienced individuals into our organization, you're not gonna wanna go for. From five weeks vacation down to two, it's just not happening, no matter how much money you're offering. Um, I, and I noticed that as a younger individual, as I get older, the money is not so much important, the free, the free time, the vacation, the flexibility. As years go on is way, way, way more important.
Yeah, I, um, yes, mayor, we already do rec- in informally um recognize that. I think we can certainly articulate that in in. Policy as as well in terms of recognizing years of service. Uh, we also actively do things like, um, even if you. Uh, come to our organization, but you're going to have six weeks holidays, you still have to accrue the six weeks holidays. And that takes an entire year.
Yeah.
Before you have six weeks. And so we we also do a practice where when you join our organization, you start with ten days holidays instead of. You know, so we're we're certainly engaged in these types of principles and 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 that's where we're learning some of these things that have also made. Some of these transitions much more attractive to people, um, to the point where we we don't even make, we don't even ask you to negotiate that, we just tell you. When you join our organization, we want it to be as smooth as possible. You're the candidate, we want this, this is what it looks like. Oh my gosh, ra- rather, rather than, you know, oh, we'll fight with them to. You know, limit their vacation as much as possible. And that, that's just a changing dynamic, I think, in the in the general job, job market as well. But, um, one other kind of big picture comment I wanna make is, and I think I wanna just make sure that this is i- is really, really, really clear. Um, and and, you know, because Colin started his presentation, it was a long, long time ago now. Um, it it was. It, the connection between having a strategically attractive compensation policy is about the taxpayers. It's not about the staff. And I I too often hear these conversations go towards, well, I don't know if the staff deserve this. Or the public are gonna be upset about it. Um, the purpose of this is to drive the highest possible service levels we can. For the people of this community. And we we've got to do, this is collective industry required, have got to do a better job. I think of just changing that conversation from um, uh, those those lazy public servants up at town office get get too good. To the better public servants we have up there, the better service you get, whether it's, I think, all, you know, from. From physical services all the way to, you know, um, the the policies we develop and all those types of things. Um. Healthy, engaged and uh well-trained and well-educated staff are what help us drive better service levels. And and you have to invest in that. It doesn't happen for free and it doesn't happen um without uh. You know, good thoughtful strategic processes like what we're going through now. And so I just wanna make sure that that distinction is very, very clear. Our approach to this at the administrative level is, we're interested in getting the best colleagues because we're interested in providing the best possible. Best possible service.
Okay, is anyone else have a comment? I got two more cents, course. When we're talking the holidays, holidays cost organizations to have so much money. So I'll use example, if an employee would be on a salary of a hundred thousand dollars a year, we could factor that in. So maybe, uh, we look at total cost as an hourly employee and I I like to comment because like in five years' time, like instead of. Take it thirty years to get six weeks when we're offering it and the comment from the mayor, for bringing someone experienced, we factor in the five years. Because they may not get their pensions and stuff, the organization, but it's becoming more and more important. So an example, we're on the nine and ten. Some of the employees would rather put in four ten-hour days. So when we're hiring, we may factor that in. We're still getting the work o- out of them. But we could have office, let's say admin staff, we have so many work Monday to Thursday, and others work Tuesday to Friday because as the trend changes. That's more important to uh people to get the days off, you know, to spend other time. So. I I believe that's part, just go back to my first comment, when you're hiring an individual, maybe part of the questionnaire, what is important to you? Time off or or money. So I think we're doing a great job and unless there's other comments, we can move on. We've talked about this lots. And it's great dialogue and I'm sure it'll come up in conversation again in the future. Okay, so thank you very, very much. Okay, moving on, no infrastructure, community, corporate services, E four, tax sale. Presentation to us.
All right, so every year we uh, we provide um these listings for our uh yearly tax sale. It's the the process that the M G A has for us to uh collect our um uncollected property taxes. Uh, this year we are hoping to have the public option on September twenty-ninth. Um, there is, are some advertising protocols that need to go before that. Uh, one of them is that, uh, we have to advertise in the Abu Dhabi Gazette. That's only published twice a month. So, um, we've come forward to committee just to get a consensus on the date. You'll see it come back next week to formalization. Uh, just so that we can get the ball rolling on on their advertising, um, because we only have that small window of being able to advertise that. So we are, you're suggesting September twenty-ninth this year, uh, so we have our twenty-twenty tax sale.
Councillor Byer.
I'm through the chairman administration. I'm, uh, it seems like, uh, something that just occurs every year and and hopefully before September twenty-ninth, the taxes are paid. And we'll have to proceed and I'm uh comfortable going forward with this.
Any other comments? Okay, that, oh, councillor, welcome to me.
Yeah, through the chair uncomfortable as well. Do we have quite a few um tax arrears that will be seen on twenty?
Through the chair to councillor Wilson. At this time, I myself haven't actually seen the year, this is just to set the date. We will bring back before that tax sale a a listing, uh, because council must set reserve bids on these. Um, between now and then, they have, uh, until, you know, until we bring that back to pay those arrears off.
Right.
Um, so at at this time, also I haven't actually seen the listing myself.
Okay.
Uh, Tricia did mention that there were a couple of commercial ones on there, um, that we hadn't really seen in in the past. Um, but unfortunately, I'm not, I probably should have asked, so I apologize for that. Um, we will, we will be bringing that list back closer to that date. With the ones that have, that are, uh, have have not paid up to that time. You usually get quite a few that come in and pay.
Pay before.
Before that time. So we usually a little bit later to bring them forward to the public forum, yeah.
Okay, thank you, and Mr. Byer.
Thank you. Um, and we're gonna talk a little bit about this in the upcoming presentation, the financial statements, but you can see the numbers are. Uh, much higher in twenty nineteen, so there's been a little bit of a trend to look back at twenty seventeen, we went from five fifteen to seven twenty-two to over a million dollars. In uh tax receivables. Um, so I guess, can you uh maybe inform council, uh, who may not be aware? Uh, some of the processes you go through in order to collect these taxes, uh, to ensure that the individuals that own these properties know that. They actually have taxes. So, I know we've taken, uh, peace officers have actually gone and knocked on doors and that sort of thing.
Uh, so the the process is that for um land and property, so one of the land is owned by by the property owner as well. Uh, before they even hit any, any of our radars for the, for this particular process thing, it's two years in arrears. So they've been getting those notices and and been aware that they have been in arrears for that amount of time. For things like a mobile home, it's it's shortened to one year. Where there's no land involved. So my goal is that in the actual um mobile home parks. Um, that they only are, are there are one year for that. Uh, so then we prepare a listing, uh, two, two, two separate listings. One for the the land and property that goes to Abu Dhabi land titles, and it actually goes on the land title. Uh, it is, it is being uh an arrears on that property. Uh, for the mobiles that goes to Abu Dhabi registries for the very similar process there. Uh, at that point, they then have a year to come in and pay those arrears that were listed at that time. And then, uh, and then the the lien will be removed from your property. After that year, that's when that's. Sorry, so that's when that gets sent to the, to the, to the land title. Sorry, they do have a year after the the two, the two years to do that. So that could, then that gets sent off and that's when it starts the tax recovery process where we then go into the the tax sale. Uh, process for that. But even from that point, they still have another year after that before we actually put it up the tax sale. So for example, a property would be almost four years in arrears before it gets to this point. Uh, at different points along the way, they can pay different amounts of those arrears to take them off. And they write up until the very. Uh, minute the 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 sale starts to come in and pay any of those arrears off so that it it can uh can then be removed from the sale. And it's the same process for the um, the mobile homes as well. They just have a shorter uh span of time to be in arrears. Before they, it kicks into that tax sale process. Um, we always make sure we have spoken with the property owners. We don't ever put it directly onto a tax sale if we have not spoken to the property owners. There are times as um, as you you mentioned. Where we, if we have been able to speak to them, we might, we might send the peace officers around to make sure that. That 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 a letter's been delivered and they understand that this is the process that is happening for for their um, for their property. And we have had some in the past that have not been aware. And so we definitely make sure that we are always contacting them before it gets to that point. Um, anytime during this, though, we do have a um, a, 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 I'm trying to think of it. A process where we, they can pay it off. A process where we they can pay it off.
Be my plan.
Tax agreement, thank you very much, yes, tax agreements, uh so they can, any any property owner can can come to the town. And we do uh what's what's called, it's actually through the M G A as well, we can do a three-year tax agreement. So we we look at what the arrears are and sort of um. Guess, well, guess is the wrong word, estimate what the taxes are will be for the next three years and come up with a plan so that after. With even even monthly payments over three years, they would have caught up. So there's always that option as well for people, if they're finding trouble keeping up with what's what's on there right now, we can actually extend that out. And make it a three-year process to bring them up to date. Um they've got an instrumental agreement with us, uh if at any time that defaults. Uh we can then start that cash recovery process if if we wish that 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 has been presented to that. That's.
Perfect.
Hopefully that wasn't too.
No, it's good. I think it's important that we uh we all understand the process, that this doesn't happen just overnight to get to this point, so thank you.
What was that first part again, I didn't understand. No, actually, thank you for your presentation, because that was one of my questions you answered, there's definitely four years. So before they hit the sale, we gave them adequate time, so. Anyone else have any questions or concerns? Okay, thank you for your presentation. Okay, I believe the next person is Skyping in.
Uh yes, so we'll have, uh we're bringing in um Ms. Shannon Balfour from the Outwarding Fund to. Finally present the two thousand nineteen financial statements to council.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
I don't know if you.
Hello, Counsel, or can you hear me?
I'm Carrie On.
Yes, I can hear you.
All right, well, um good evening, and I believe you have in front of you a copy of the draft financial statements. For the two thousand and nineteen year end, and as Sarah said, we are a little bit. Later than we have been in prior years because of uh covid. Um but I guess we'll just delve right into it, and what I want to start with first of all. Is that these are a draft set of financial statements and they don't get finalized until you approve them at your next meeting. So once you approve them, then then we will submit them to municipal affairs. And I don't anticipate there's any changes unless there's something that comes to light in the meeting tonight when we're presenting. So to get right into it, I want to go to the independent auditor's report, which I believe is. Um page one after the cover, and I'm going to share my screen with you. So you can see what we're talking about. All right, so what we're looking at here is the independent auditor's report, and the most important part of this report. Is the opinion that's in the first part of the letter or of the report. And you want to have a clean audit opinion, so if you look at the second paragraph there, it says, in our opinion. The accompanying financial statements present fairly in all material respects the financial position and results of operations. For the two thousand and nineteen year end, so this is a clean audit opinion, which is good. The other thing is that there, um the rest of the report is basically how. How we base our opinion on what management's responsibilities are, and then if we go to the next page. It's what our responsibilities are for preparing the audit. Um and then at the bottom of it will be the date, which I have as today's date for the draft, but it'll actually be next week when you have your meeting. And then it will be signed. So the next page that I want to go to is a consolidated statement of financial position. So this is basically a snapshot of the assets and liabilities of the town at December thirty first. So as of right now, the results may be significantly different than how they're presented in these financial statements. But this is how they were at December thirty first, so we've gone through a lot um of what the amounts are in prior years. So I'm gonna go through it fairly quickly, but if there's any questions, please feel free to ask. I'll try and stop at the end of each um schedule, so there's an opportunity to ask questions. Cash and temporary investments are is just the cash in the bank and the investments that the town had at December thirty first. So you can see there about a million dollars higher than they were last year, and this basically result results of timing as to when cash is coming in. And going out. Receivables, as you guys kind of touched on, um just in the last agenda point. Your property tax receivables are about three hundred thousand dollars higher than they were last year. Now, some of these amounts were paid subsequent to year end, and some of these amounts were written off subsequent to year end. But it is obvious that there is slower collection of the taxes receivable. Your trade and other receivables are basically just uh general amounts owing, some of it's grants, that type of thing. You can see that it's very similar to what it was last year. Your land held for resale is also very similar to what was what was there last year. And your other financial assets is just accrued interest on your investments. So you have twenty-nine million dollars of assets, your liabilities are debt that the town has owing. Uh accounts payable, you can see that they're a lot less than they were last year, and this is basically a combination of timing. And the fact that last year there were some large payables for the wastewater treatment plant and the demolition of the recplex, so those were in there. And then it just comes down to when things are getting paid and how quickly. Deposit liabilities were very similar to what they were last year, deferred revenue is money that you guys have. In your bank account that is for a specific purpose that has not been spent yet, and in deferred revenue. A lot of it is is grant money that you have received and is going to be used uh in the future. The provision for landfill closure, so this is the liability for the closure of the landfill. It's one point seven million dollars this year versus one point three million dollars last year. So what happened with this one was because of the fire and because of um changes there, the number of years. That the land use was available, that the landfill was available for use was significantly reduced. And what this did was require the town to recognize the costs for closing the landfill. On a much quicker basis, so the liability had to be increased substantially in this two thousand and nineteen year end as a catch-up. And then there will probably be larger charges than what we had previously anticipated when the landfill was going to have a longer life. On a go-forward basis. Long-term debt, you can see that it's thirteen million dollars versus thirteen nine this year, so there's about nine hundred thousand dollars of debt paid off. There's a total, um the debt is a two things, some of it is your debentures. And there's a small amount that relates to capital leases, so these are leases that are where you purchase. Where you're leasing an asset, but it's very similar to as if you had purchased it, so it's set up as a capital asset. And then the capital lease is set up as debt on these financial statements. Now, your total debt as it is right now will go to two thousand or two twenty thirty-six. Will be the year that this final debenture payment is made, bear barring any new debt being received. The non-financial assets, tangible capital assets of a hundred and twelve um million. It is the book value, so the depreciated value of all of the assets that are owned by the town. So this includes your roads, your um your sewer, like your underground infrastructure, buildings, land. All those types of things, equipment. Your prepaid expenses are amounts that have been. Paid for but are not being used right now, so it would be things like um supplies that have been prepaid, that type of thing. And your inventory consumption, first consumption is basically the the inventory that's at the town yard. That will be used in the future. So you have a total accumulated surplus of a hundred and twenty-one million dollars. A majority of that is a result of having large capital assets. And we're going to go into what makes up that accumulated surplus um a little bit more detail in another schedule. So does anyone have any questions on these financial statements? Like this, this financial position, this statement? Okay, so I'm not hearing anything, so I'm gonna go to the next schedule, which is the consolidated statement of operations. So this is, shows all of the revenues that were received and expenditures that were incurred by the town for the two thousand.
Can you hear us?
Yes.
Shannon, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Uh mayor had a question for you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Shannon, uh my mute, my uh mic was muted there, uh somebody has all the power. The uh, this is probably more a question to Sarah or a comment. I'd be really interested to know, uh because when I was looking at this, I I did compare to twenty seventeen. And uh the receivables of property taxes have doubled since twenty seventeen. So I'd kind of want to see what the historical numbers have been in that regard to see if this is, and we're gonna see some changes with covid, obviously. Of where we normally are and and what the trends have been, um to have a look at that just uh for more of interest sake and see if there's any. Anything we can do about that.
So that's really, if I can add, I'll do a cheer to um your worship.
Go ahead.
Uh is, uh when we presented the the quarterly report, I heard some um um you mentioning that as well. So we are definitely looking into that and wanting to bring back some of those comparisons for you um from previous years. And also, uh because this year isn't due until September.
Yeah.
Kind of have to sort of bring that in as well, and we wanted to bring that back to you to kind of show you how how that was um was going, and I I was. Even thinking I might like to get some com- comparables from other municipalities around us as well and see how that's going over the last. Few years and do some of those those comparisons for you and bring you back a schedule that will show you that.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, go ahead and Counsel.
To the chair to Sarah as well, I think uh along those lines, it's. It's equally important to look at the amount uh written off at that debt, uh because it receivable is okay as long as it gets paid, but if it's. If there's a increasing trend in bad debt, then that would be really concerning.
Okay, and we also have any questions? Okay, carry on Shannon.
All right, so I'm going to go to the next page, which is the statement of operations, so the revenues and expenses for the town. And what I've done this year is I've kind of done some graphs, so I hope these will make sense to you when you're looking at them. But what I, what this is, is this is your revenues, and I've compared nineteen to budget, which is in green, and then to the prior year. Which is in blue, and you can see looking at this, these are government transfers and user fees. Um so these are the numbers that are off the financial statements, just presented in a grant gra- our graph form. That your two thousand and nineteen government transfers are about five hundred thousand dollars down from budget. And there's two parts of it, there's a little bit less money from the Yellowhead County for revenue sharing and cost sharing. And then there was also a grant that was budgeted for that wasn't received um relating to the landfill in those numbers, so that's the decrease. In government transfers. In user fees, you had about a five hundred thousand dollar decrease from um budget compared to current year. And a lot of this decrease had to do with what was budgeted for land sales and the fact that there was actually very minimal amount of land sale. In the year, so that's a significant portion of it, there was also some other decrease in user fees relating to both water and relating to the landfill. Some of the other expenses then, investment income, you can see on this one that you're significantly over budget, but. Similar compared to prior year, basically the budget's a very conservative number and it historically has been that way, so we usually see this kind of trend. In your fines, this is one that I know that you guys have discussed um in prior meetings, and you can see that fines are significantly different. Um from budget and from prior year, and this basically all relates to the photo radar. Franchise fees, you can see they're very similar to budget, and rentals, you can see that they as well are very similar to budget. So when we go back to your financial statement, your total revenue is your budget of twenty-seven point nine million dollars. Versus your two thousand and nineteen of twenty-six point six million dollars, you've got a one point three million dollar decrease from budget. And significant portion of that's relating to the photo radar files. So on the expense side of things. When we're looking at expenses compared to budget and compared to prior year, you can see that um legislative, public health. And culture are all very similar um for from budget and from prior year as well. Planning is a little bit less than budget. And basically in planning. Um what what's in planning is usually the cost of land sales, and so because there were no land sales this year in revenue. Then there's no associated cost and expenses, and it also had a little bit less in payroll costs than in what was budgeted for. So some of the other departments expenditures are compared to budget and prior year, admin, protective services. Uh protective services are down from budget, this is a function of the fact that the photo radar fines were down, so then the associated costs. Were down as well, roads are slightly over budget, uh that would have been uh streetlights that were in there. Sorry, they're very similar to budget, it's it's over compared to last year, and that would be because of the streetlight project that that happened this year. Utilities are significantly higher, this is almost all the result of the landfill liability. And the fire cost, the cost associated with the fire at the landfill. As well, there were some West Yellowhead Regional Waste Management costs that we bring into these financial statements when we prepare them on a consolidated basis. Because you are a partner in that organization. Recreation looks significantly different from last year, and that's because last year in recreation, we wrote off the rec complex. And that write-off was a a two point five million dollar charge to your guys' expenses when we wrote down those assets. So that's what the big difference there is for recreation compared to prior year. So your expenses, when you look at what was budgeted and what was actual, although there were a bunch of differences. That happened within the different functions, um the total expenses compared to budget were actually fairly similar. What the next line down though is your um, the one I want to talk about is this line here, your government. Capital transfers, so you can see that there was three point two billion do- million dollars budgeted to be received. And only seven hundred thousand dollars was received, so a significant portion of this were for some grants. That were expected to be um spent during the year when budget was prepared, and they are ending up being deferred to being used. In another project and will be spent in future years, so it's it's grant money that was received. But wasn't actually spent on projects this year, and that is a sign reason why your surplus. Or a a part of the reason why your surplus, which was budgeted here at the four point nine million dollars, but was actually only one million dollars. Two million of that dollars of that is because of that, or two and a half million dollars is because you didn't get the capital funding that was budgeted for. Or didn't spend the capital budget, capital funding that was budgeted for. The other part of that decrease would be because fines had decreased, um and because user fees had decreased. So were there any questions on this schedule?
Bauer, yes, we do have a question.
All right.
Uh through the chair, through the church, Shannon, uh thank you for the graphs, um I appreciate seeing those, and I'm sure anybody watching um finds that to be a bit more user-friendly. Um I do have a question to administration regarding the grants um that were or should be spent in future years. Can you elaborate on any of those details?
Absolutely, uh through the chair to Counselor Bauer. Uh originally, at our original twenty nineteen budget, we had used M S I money to, as budgeted money to pay for projects. Um as you know, that is, that was then, we held up with another project that that we were, we're going for on a more federal level. Um so we could, it when twenty nineteen finished, we still had heard whether that other grant has come through. So we couldn't use that M S I to fund those projects, so we used our reserves um instead. Once we hear about this other grant, we'll know whether that M S I is freed up or whether we can, we can then then use it on on different projects, so that really is, is the difference is that M S I money. So that really is, is the difference is that MSI money.
Okay, do a follow-up with some instance question? Yes, go ahead.
To administration, um, the, uh, money from the wastewater treatment plant that we then were hoping to receive, uh, the two million dollars, is that listed anywhere in here or is that kind of off the books?
Timing, timing. I think it's, I think it's off the books. I think we funded that at the end of eighteen. Uh, so that it wasn't sitting on there. I believe that is, uh, yeah, it was these few months.
If you want to write a little government of Alberta, Ohio, you two million dollars and you totally can.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, is there any other questions? Okay, carry on Shannon. I believe we're, you're doing fine. Carry on.
All right. So the next thing that I want to basically go to is, um, there's a schedule that's called expenditures by object. Um, and it is page eleven on your guys' handout. So this just shows the consolidated, um, rep, expenses by the different types of expenses. And I get this same kind of thing, excuse me, I seem to be stuttering here, um, with graphing for it. So when we're looking at the expenses by object, uh, purchases from governments. So there was less than what was budgeted and this is basically because there were less lease costs. This is a photo radar, but the actual placing costs were less than what was budgeted. And that's the main reason for the decrease there. In materials, uh, there's an increase over what was budgeted and some of this, most of it has to do with the fact that there were some expenditures that were included in operations when we did the financial statements that were actually budgeted for in capital. So really it's an allocation of where the expenditure was put for accounting purposes. Transfers to other government, you can see it's slightly less than budget and it's significantly less than last year. And last year had, uh, three hundred thousand dollar contribution for the bike trails. And so that's the reason for that difference there. When we're looking at salaries, um, there were some variations and different allocations between departments, but overall salaries are four percent less than what was budgeted and, and they're up four percent from prior years. There was an increase in salaries from prior year, but they are under budgeted. And it's not one significant big thing. It's a number of various amounts, small amounts that basically add up to that change. Contracted services, you can see that it's slightly over budget as well as increased or higher than what it was last year. And it's a combination of two things that kind of offset. There's more costs relating to the landfill and contracted services, which is with the increase. But this increases offset by decreased costs for photo radar. So those two kind of net out to, to have the net increase over budget and over prior year. And then the amortization expense is very similar to what it's been in the past. So I just wanted to have a quick look at that. You can see also when you're looking at this, that we have a net loss on the sale of tangible capital assets. So this is just when we're writing off assets or when assets have been sold. And part of this net loss is the write-down for the transfer of the land that went to the, um, another association this year as well as the write-down of the parking lot, the associated parking lot. And last year, that two point five million dollar write-down of tangible capital assets, that was the write-down of the rec complex last year. So are there any questions on this schedule?
No, carry on.
No, okay. Um, I, there, there's a whole lot of things that are in the notes that I don't really want to go through. They're basically supporting information for the stuff that's in these financial statements and probably a lot of reading that'll put you to sleep at night if you need it. Um, the one I did want to address was on page twenty here, which is the accumulated surplus. And so when we talked about it earlier on the statement of financial position and it also shows on the statement of operations, there's a hundred and twenty, just shy of a hundred and twenty one million dollar surplus. And it's made up of a number of things. So a surplus can be restricted or unrestricted. And an unrestricted surplus is when it doesn't have any designated, um, use for those funds. So you can see there's unrestricted surplus and we have them, as I mentioned earlier, because we consolidate with the West Yellowhead, uh, Regional Waste Management. The, we also bring in your twenty five percent share of all their revenues, all their expenses, all their assets. And those are included in your financial statements. So I've separated it out to show your surplus specifically for the town as well as the twenty five percent share of the deficit that's for the, uh, waste management authority. And so you can see that your surplus is two hundred and forty five thousand dollars down a little bit from last year. And the with Yellowhead, West Yellowhead Regional Waste Management Authority is about a hundred and seventy six thousand dollar deficit. Now the restricted funds are amounts that you guys have designated to be set aside for specific purposes. They're separated between operating and capital. And then you guys have within these funds, specific, um, accounts that make up the total that we've included here. So you can see the restricted surplus for the Waste Management Authority is six hundred and sixty thousand dollars. You've got three million dollars of operating reserves and then seventeen million dollars of capital reserves. That final number, the ninety nine million dollars is the equity in capital assets. So you can kind of think of this as your equity in your house. If you had a, a mortgage on your house, it's the book value of your house, of your assets minus the debt against it. So in the note above it, you can see the calculation there where it shows what your capital asset cost was of a hundred and eighty five million, your depreciation on those capital assets of seventy three million and then the thirteen million dollar sub debt, which gets you to that ninety nine point eight million dollars of equity. So your hundred and twenty million dollars of accumulated surplus is, most of it is tied up in capital assets, which you aren't, you aren't able to liquidate into assets to provide services. You use them to provide services, but you aren't able to liquidate them to provide the town with cash, um, to purchase stuff with. Were there any questions on this, the accumulated surplus?
No, carry on Shannon. We're all well educated here.
Excellent. Okay. One thing I did want to jump back to, uh, was on the statement of financial position, which is your guys' page three. Uh, one thing I wanted to point out, uh, or a couple of things I want to point out here just in closing is that as it's sitting right now, and as I mentioned, this is a snapshot at a point in time. So it, it, it changes, is that you are in a net asset position. This number here of seven million dollars, meaning if you were to sell all your land for what it's worth on the books and you've got your cash in the bank and everyone paid you your receivables here, you would have twenty nine million dollars. You can use that to pay out all your debts and you would have seven million dollars left. So being in a net financial asset position is a good position to be in. It means you have money to pay your debts. Uh, you also have an accumulated surplus position. So this is good because this means you have equity in, um, the town. What it doesn't show is it doesn't show your commitments. So although at this point of time, right now, you have cash in the bank, you have net financial asset position and you have surpluses that are in reserves and, and in equipment kind of thing. If, if there's significant expenses in the future or significant capital projects, um, seeing as how large they have been and how expensive they are based on the last couple of years with the numbers we've been seeing, it can change your financial position quite quickly. So looking at this, to me, it brings back the fact that budgeting and planning and stuff like that is very important to be able to provide you guys with the information you need to make, um, good decisions. That's kind of what I wanted to talk about with regards to these financial statements. Unless anybody had, um, any other questions when they're reviewing the financial statements or anything else?
Oh, yes, we have a question from the mayor. Sorry, I know we all want to move on. It's been a long meeting already, uh, but I enjoy Shannon so much.
That's good to hear.
Yes. Uh, just a question, I guess, for interest sake, uh, if you have an opinion on what our unrestricted surplus should be at? Or should it be higher? Should it be lower? What's your thoughts around that? Um, as well as, uh, our restricted surpluses, if you have any, uh, from your expertise, what you think those should be at?
Well, your unrestricted surplus is a number that is really hard to say where it should be because as you know, and like, as you've seen from what's happened in the past, like three or four months, uh, your numbers can change significantly with just one, one change, right? COVID nineteen has, has resulted in you guys having to change your budget, decrease costs. Um, if you had a whole bunch of unrestricted surplus, you potentially could have maintained regular service levels or not maintain them, but could not have to cut the cost that you had to cut in this twenty twenty year uh, because you had a whole bunch of unrestricted surplus. But at the same point, you don't want it to be too high because you're using, um, the gut, the, the members of the town, the residents of the towns money and, and you don't want to be having it unnecessarily. So I honestly don't have a, a solid answer for you on what your unrestricted surplus needs to be. I think it needs to come back to, um, planning, uh, with you guys and having, um, specific reserves set aside. Because I think that's more important than your unrestricted surplus. And your reserves have to be for specific purposes. So there's no set amount that I should say your operating reserve should be a certain percentage of your budget or a certain dollar amount. It's important that your reserves, if you say they're three million dollars, you can back up why they're three million dollars. So is it to cover contingencies like, um, you know, uh, abnormal amounts of snowfall and, and the associated higher costs? Or in capital reserves, is it to, are you planning to fund, um, to replace the wastewater treatment plant when it comes in? Or are you planning for road rehab work? And, and what's your timeline for that? And when do you need a certain amount of dollars at a certain point? That would be my thought on your, on your, like, surplus, your unrestricted surplus and your reserves.
Thank you. Okay, I believe we're all fine Shannon. Uh, thank you for the excellent work again. Uh, there's all these numbers. Now we're going to have migraines tonight, but thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on. Okay, uh, no one has questions?
So, um,
Yes, go ahead, yeah.
Uh, so just moving through, uh, acknowledging your question again and we'll do the close session. Shannon will join us again as she typically does to just, uh, spend a brief moment with council in the close session. So she'll jump off the link she's in and she'll be waiting for us in a, a close session link here in just a moment.
Okay, comments? Uh, now we're going to move on to, there's no sundry, so questions from media or anyone emailed in. Okay, then carrying on, then can I get a motion to go in camera, councillor Byers, oh, favor. It was posed. Motion for adjournment, councillor Sorensen, thank you.
I didn't get a moment.